All right, good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carter, if you would read our community prayer?
Sure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessings as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness or joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Carter. All right, the first item on our agenda, as always, is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Mr. Belvin?
Robert Belvin, 26 Gate Street. The first thing I want to talk about is, I gave Mr. Townsend a picture here. At the end of my driveway, I have a telephone pole that was replaced a year ago, and it hasn't been completed. The electric company did their job, but the phone company has to do theirs before the cable company does theirs, moving everything over, and they're not doing it. I've called, they've called, they complain. We'll get storms, it moves around, screws up our internet. My son works from home. So I drove around town, I found a couple more, one on Main Street and one on Plymouth Street, where it appears that the phone company and the cable company's not doing their job. Okay? Once a pole is replaced, you've got to finish it within a reasonable amount of time. Waiting over a year is not, since I'm not getting anywhere with these people, I'm putting it back on your shoulders because it's on Tom Robby. And I don't think any more poles should be allowed to be replaced or to come get new ones until they repair all at once throughout the town. So if you guys want to take a look at those, I guess I gave it to Mr. Townsend. All right, something has to be done. They can't be hanging out here for years on that. The next one, I handed out a copy of a release of restriction deed. This is for Lakeview Street there, and the Conservation Commission had Town Council write up a release of restriction here. And this is about the fence in between the Council on Agey Building and the conservation property. I have put emails out to you guys about this. There's supposed to be a fence there. It was in the deed. I gave you a copy of the deed where it says it's supposed to be there forever. All right, a fence, and the town's supposed to maintain it. Okay? But at the first page, it says, the last sentence, affecting property located at 48 Lakeview Street, even though the Conservation Commission is 44 Lakeview Street, helping Conservation Commission tell 48 to release the deed when it's not even their property. Number one. Okay? Then it says, owned by the Town of Carver, acting by and through its select board, infer the state that the restriction has expired by operational law. My question to you guys is, when did you vote on this? I'm telling you, the only thing that you guys said when they were talking about this, they, Conservation Commission said, we're looking into removing the fence. That's it. No one here, the select board, went ahead and voted on it. Never. So Town Council filed a false deed with registry deeds, which is against the law. Can't do that, just like forge. Okay? Now, on the deed, it clearly shows here, under number two, that the town was supposed to put a fence up, supposed to keep and maintain the fence forever. And I understand, I think it was in 2015 or whatnot, it came down that you can only have it for 30 years for a deed restriction. Okay, for 30 years, just to keep everyone aware. 30 years if you put a deed on your property, okay? That's as far as you can go. You can then, before that deed ends, you can go for another 20 years, so you can add it before the 30 years is up. All right? So my question to you guys is, what are you going to do about Town Council who filed a false deed for the Conservation Commission, on a deed that you guys own, not the Conservation Commission? Because it's on you guys, all right, to turn around and say, you know what? This is wrong. This is false. Okay? This is wrong. It's your name. You guys are the select board. You guys didn't vote on it. I'd be really angry if I was sitting up there to know that Town Council went ahead and filed a false deed with the registry of deeds and never told you guys it was being done. Because even if they told you it was done, you never voted on it. Okay? So you guys need to do something about it. Okay? So thank you very much. I'm done speaking. Have a good day, and congratulations, officers.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. Are there any other citizens that want to address the board this evening? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to the promotion of police officer to Sergeant Michael Wall and Officer David Heckler. Chief? And let me just say, it's great to have so many members of the Carver Police Department here with us this evening, so thank you.
We feel safe. Well, thank you, and good evening. Thanks for allowing us to have a little bit of time tonight to move the department forward in a very positive direction. As you were aware, last year, we saw the retirement of two other police sergeants, and left two openings that need to be filled. Tonight, I'm going to ask the honorable board to, or recommend to the honorable board, to promote Officer Wall and Officer Heckler to sergeant. But before I get to that, I'd like to speak to you a little bit about the process that we went through to get here. As you recall, last year, we removed the department from civil service. In part, the reasoning for doing so was to improve and expedite our promotional process. As you all know, an unfilled supervisor role has a negative impact, not only on the department, but on our offices and on the public. Sergeants are our first-line supervisors that ensure the effective and efficient operation of our police department on a day-to-day basis. They play a critical role in mentoring and development of our offices. When we're not here, myself with a deputy, they're in charge of the department. Recognizing the importance of placing quality individuals in the role of sergeant, we developed a promotional process that would cause those involved to study topics valuable to that job, and then test them on the application of that knowledge. Our process, conducted by an outside agency, consisted of three components. The first was a written test regarding criminal law and procedure within Massachusetts. After that, the officers participated in what's called an assessment center, where three ranking officers from other departments came in and asked, and tested them on that knowledge they learned, and applied that in four different scenarios. Finally, each candidate was given appropriate credit for their years of service, educational level, and any military service. We were very fortunate, we had three very good officers take the, complete the process, and all of them did very well. Tonight, it's my honor to present to the board for consideration the first two candidates in that ranking for promotion to sergeant. Both officers began their careers in the Carver Police Department in March of 2015, when they attended the Plymouth Police Academy together. Officer Michael Wall has been a police officer with us for nine years. During that time, he has served as a patrol officer and a school resource officer. He is also a member of the support staff for our regional SWAT team. Michael also serves his country as a staff sergeant with the Massachusetts National Guard, and he recently returned from a year-long deployment. He has earned a master's degree in homemade security from American Public University, and Michael lives in town with his wife and three children. Officer David Heckler has been a police officer with us for nine years. During that time, he has served as a patrol officer and is assigned as our TASER instructor and a firearms instructor. David is also an operator with our regional SWAT team. He is also a United States Marine who was honorably discharged at the rank of corporal. David earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Bridgewater State University. And in 2020, he received a lifesaving award for his role in saving a woman from a fire. David lives in town with his wife and his son. I am proud to present both of them to you for promotion. I'm very confident they will fulfill the role of honor, empathy, and professionalism. I look forward to welcoming them to our command staff. Before I move on, are there any questions from the board?
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
So then I would respectfully request the board consider a motion to promote Carver Police Officers Michael Wall and David Heckler to the rank of police sergeant.
Thank you. Officers, do either one of you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to promote the officers, Michael Wall and David Heckler, to sergeant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you.
As my timing is impeccable, we scheduled this tonight for Election Day, so our town clerk can't be here today and swear them in, but we'll take care of that tomorrow. But I would like to ask their faulty spouses to come up and pin their badges on in front of the board if I can, if we could.
Absolutely.
Do you mind if they stand?
Yeah.
Feel free.
All right. It's kind of traditional to have your spouse or significant other to pin your badge on you. Try not to stab them. Do you want more from this side? You might get a better shot. Do you guys want to come and take a picture?
Sure.
So that's it for us. Thank you very much for your time. We greatly appreciate it. Thanks for a big show tonight and support us. We definitely appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, as always, for all you do. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks again.
What is? Wait a minute. All right. Next on our agenda this evening is a discussion and possible vote to amend the Town Administrator's screening committee charge, and we have, we have the chairman of the screening committee, Pat Maher, with us this evening.
Me too.
Donna.
Can someone get Pat Maher?
Thank you for joining us this evening, Mr. Maher.
I was here on time, too, and I started yapping a little bit, so.
If you could just introduce yourself to the folks at home and make sure you speak right into the microphone, okay?
Okay. Chair of the Town Administrator's Search Committee. He was giving you a quick update and then talking about a couple of the.
Pat, we're having trouble hearing you.
Can you speak right into the mic?
Hold the mic back maybe a little bit?
Thank you.
What I'll do is I'll give you a quick update, generic update, and then we'll talk about a couple of the charges as they've been from their original timeframe.
Okay.
Bottom line is, is we had a total of 29 applicants for the position. And as of yesterday, there were eight solid recommendations, and today there are seven. We did have one dropped out today, which didn't really surprise me, because I knew who it was, but. So that's where we are right now, and I am pretty pleased with that outcome. I didn't think it was going to, to tell you the truth, I didn't think it was going to be that good. But, you know, 29 applicants, and I'll tell you, the people in Carver are very solid.
Mr. Maher, could you just make sure you speak into that microphone? I don't know if it's not working well, or, but it's.
It seems to be.
It doesn't look like it's on.
Yeah.
I don't think it's working.
Do you want to?
Maybe you should.
Just sit over here?
Sit up here.
Let's test that one over here. There we go. Sorry. Thanks, Mr. Maher. It was just a little tough to hear you. I'm sure the people at home probably had the same difficulties.
Okay.
There we go.
That's better.
My kids never had a problem hearing me. So I'll start over again, just by saying that in generic update is, we had 20, in total, we had 29 applicants. As of yesterday, we had eight recommendations from the consultant, and there was one that dropped out, so now we have seven. But seven solid recommendations, and I have a lot of good things, too, to say about the consultant. He's doing a very good job. He's being very, very thorough, and is really scanning these candidates very well. So, but the two things that we want to talk about tonight that were part of the charge are that, that we need to revisit. The charge said that we must present four unranked candidates, four unranked finalists. I see that as a little restrictive, because if we do three, then we don't meet the mark. If we do, if we think there's five or six, then we don't meet the mark. So I'd like to see, the last time we did this, we changed that language a little bit to say a minimum of four. Another way you could look at it is no fewer than three, no more than six. But I think just to leave it at four restricts us a little bit. So I'll leave it to the board to see how, how they would like to proceed on that one.
As I recall, there was a lot of discussion when we first made this charge about this number, and, and the reason we, we settled on at least four was because if you have three, and then someone drops out, and it seems like many times someone does drop out, now you're down to two. So, so I would be a little hesitant to go down to, you know, at least three, and, and I would, I'd certainly be willing to, and I'm curious to know what the rest of the board thinks, you know, a minimum of four would be fine with me. If you want to send five or six, that's.
I think that's more flexible language.
Yeah.
And we certainly, I don't see, from, from what I see on the recommendations, I don't see any problem sending four.
I'm just hesitant to go below four, just because of the concern that someone will drop out, and then we'll be down to choosing between two.
And we already had somebody drop out. But by the, but by the time they're, they're going to be finalists, they're, they're, they're serious, but I've seen it happen before, too. So.
What are the, what are the thoughts of the, from the rest of the board on that?
I'd like to see the language stay, move to a minimum of four.
Yeah, I think that's what she had recommended. That's fine.
Yeah, that way they have more flexibility.
Would that be a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay.
And we appreciate that. And I think the number of applicants reflects just how good of a job I think the Carver Town Administrator position is, so I think people recognize that.
It is, and, and I'd like to say, too, the consultant is, is really also a very good recruiter. He, there, it's, name of the, name of the outfit is Gru White, and they have about 70% of their placements are, are not people that were currently looking. They went out and recruited. So they, they know the, they know the territory, they know the scene, and they've done a very good job doing that. And, you know, on all of these, we had a couple of outliers, like applicant from California, and another one from another western state, but the remainder of these are all relatively local. So that's a good sign, too. The other thing that I want to visit is that these unranked finalists to the select board by March 12th, which obviously isn't going to happen. So that was a pretty aggressive date. So what I'm going to propose is that we're going to do everything we can to have four finalists to the select board by March 27th.
Okay.
And as I really don't want, and I've said this before, I don't want to sacrifice thoroughness for speed, and want to make sure that we get the best candidates possible, we want to make sure we pass on the best candidates possible, and then I think if we do that by the 27th, that would be acceptable.
I think, I understand that we don't want to sacrifice thoroughness for speed, but there also is some urgency to the whole situation.
There is.
And I think that's, I, I think just speaking for myself, I could go along with the 27th. I think that's the middle of the week, which gives us time to use those next two days to set up some, some interview times with people. We don't waste another week, so, again, I'll listen to the thoughts of the board, but.
So my, you said that you would be, you'd have four candidates, four is by the 27th. Don't you mean a minimum of four?
Well, a minimum of four, right, right. At least four.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm good with that.
I guess the question is, so what's left in the process? You're down to seven. You said you have seven good, solid candidates.
Right.
That you need to present somewhere between four and seven to the board.
That's right.
So if you give us all seven, or you give us four or five, I guess what's left in your process that's.
Then what less, what's left in our process as the screening committee is, as soon as we provide the select board with candidates, our, our job is done.
But to get to the 27th, I'm asking, so where?
Oh, to get to the 27th, so, okay. So we're, we're. We're meeting tomorrow night, and we're going to go over, it'll be the, the full committee going over all the applicants and the, the recommendations. And maybe, maybe there's, there's some feeling on the, on the committee itself that out of all the applicants, maybe there, there should have been another one or two in there that should have been a recommendation, and we're going, and that's what we're going to discuss. And then from that point, we're going to, we're going to start an interview process.
Okay.
We're going to try to do as, as early as the following week, we'll do one afternoon and Saturday morning. Hopefully, we can get them all in, but that may have to go to the following week if we can't. I mean, you know, these, these individuals are all working. They're in the same place that we are, doing budgets and having meetings and so forth. So a serious candidate will, will certainly do everything they can to, to make, to make room for that, and what we have to do is, is give them the room to do it. And if that, if that takes another day, that takes another day. And then, when, once we come up with our final recommendations, then the consultant is going to do a little bit more background work, background searches on these people. Hopefully, that we, and whether those are all done by the time we, we provide you the names or not, that can still go on. So the background search just may go on, but what they'll do is they'll have, who's ever going to be considered a finalist will have, you know, in writing, accepted that, that condition.
Could, could we say, could the verbiage be on or before the 27th? So let's just say you're, it goes ahead of schedule and you can get it done by the 22nd, which is Friday.
Yeah.
We could then line something up.
Well, it says by the 27th, so that means, you know, anytime before, anyway, so, but if you want to change the language, go, I mean, go ahead, go ahead.
And then the other question relative to that is, I agree with that, if the sooner you can get candidates to us, would it make sense for you, if you've picked a couple, are you going to wait till the whole package, or would it be possible to say, we've definitely got two on the top of the list, you know, get them to the board so we can start our process?
They're supposed to be unranked, though.
Yeah. Normally what happens is in the, we get the whole package at one time.
Yeah, yeah, but they're going to be, basically, they're going to be unranked. We're going to give you, you know, here's four to seven candidates.
Okay.
And your job is ranking them, you know, not, not, of course, you know, we'll, you can't help do it anyway, you're going to have it in your head, but we're not going to give you any, any indications of who we thought were better candidates than others. But you'll just know that of the 29, these were the best.
Okay. And I guess the only other thing I would say is if we, if we agree on the date of the 27th, I think we have to stick to that date. I don't think we can go any, any later than that.
Yeah, well.
I think we have to.
That's three weeks.
Yeah, that's, I think we have to. Because there is some urgency in, in here to get that.
Oh, there, there is an urgency, and we're, and again, you know, we're, we're trying to walk a fine line, too, between the urgency and, you know, making sure that the best candidates go forward.
Absolutely.
So I don't really see a problem with the 27th.
Okay.
But.
And of course, if you can do it earlier.
If we can do it earlier, we will do it earlier.
Any other thoughts from the board on?
Need a motion?
Yes.
All right, so I guess I'll move that we.
Thanks for your work, Pat.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Maher?
We'll move that, that we will, you'll present a minimum of four unranked finalists to the select board on or before March 27th, 2024.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And yes, thank you and your entire, your entire committee for your hard work.
Good, and, oh, good, good. Thanks for.
And pass that along, if you would, to the consultant as well.
I will, and thank you for clarifying those things.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. As always, if you need anything, please get in touch with us, we'll get it on an agenda.
That's right, I'm not shy. Right, okay.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right. Next this evening is a Town Administrator update. Our Town Administrator is not with us this evening. Ms. Weston, do you have any type of update?
I do not.
Okay. If you could just make a note, I think for our next meeting, we need to have an ARPA status on just where we are and what funds we have outstanding.
Okay.
Okay, so if you could just make a note of that for the next meeting. All right. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of February 26, 2024.
I move we approve the minutes of February 26, 2024.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have a request for one-day special licenses for RTJ Concessions Edville Railroad, Pine Street, for July 6th, July 13th, July 20th, July 27th, August 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th, and 31st, October 12th and 13th, November 8th, 9th, 10th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, 29th, and 30th, December 1st, 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th. December 1st, 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, 12th, 13th, 14th, 15th, 19th, 20th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 30th, and 31st. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it for discussion.
All right, I'll recuse myself from this.
Absolutely, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Before just, I know there was an email sent out earlier that they hadn't paid their taxes yet. Is that still?
That's what I wanted to discuss, yeah.
That's still the status?
That is correct.
Okay. So we think we need to make sure that they pay their taxes.
Should I withdraw the motion? Or we'll just, we'll wait, we'll put this back on the agenda?
Or you could amend, you could amend it to, subject to them paying their taxes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve subject to payment of taxes.
I'll, I'll second that.
One second, okay. Is there any, any other further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And your abstention, correct, Mr. Carter? All right, so three to nothing.
Well, if I may, an abstention is a vote. It's different from a recuse.
He recused himself, yeah. Thank you. Let's see. Topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair 48 hours in advance of the meeting? There are none. Select board announcements. Mr. Ryan?
I guess if anyone's listening, there's still time to vote. Are they, is the polls open until 7 o'clock tonight? So there's still time to get over there if you haven't been there yet.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carter?
No announcements.
Ms. Yuen?
Yeah, I was just going to let people know that voting's open until 7:00. Same thing. Your vote does matter. There have been elections where someone won by one, two, three votes. The primary may not seem so important, but it's good practice if you never did it before. The other thing is to please remember, Shane, give thanks, give thanks, Food Pantry, as always.
All right, thank you. I have nothing to add this evening. Our next meeting is March 12th, 2024. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 21A2, to discuss strategy and in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel of Town Administrator Robert Fennessey, and/or to engage in negotiations with non-union personnel, again, the Town Administrator Robert Fennessey, if discussion would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, and to return to open session. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session, all right?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mr. Carter?
John Carter says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Yuen says aye.
All right, we are in executive session. Thank you.